First meeting of the Thetford Town Council, I think we call it venues, markets and communications. Committee now, don't we?
Venues and markets, yeah.
We changed it, didn't we?
We probably changed it.
Anyway, welcome. Nice to see a couple of officers here. Thanks for coming along. Without further ado, 61223, has anybody got any declarations of any discloseable pecuniary interests? That's a no. Thank you for that. Apologies for absence. I think we have one.
Council, Jason.
Thank you very much. 614, to confirm the minutes of the venues and markets committee meeting held on 50th November 2023. Has anybody any comments to make on that?
Question of it is, um, the website said it was going out running in gender. I'm not technical minded with things. I'll Google. The website still be on website.
Not the agreement.
Yeah, June. So the North State 31st.
Yeah, I've concentrated this.
We'll come on to that later.
And the other one was the steps and comments that said everything done.
Again, there's a help and safety agenda item. I can pick that up in there if you.
That's all right. Thank you.
Yes, I can.
The, so we'll move on to 615, the communications report. Actually, that's going to be you.
Um, so, um, obviously it's been quite a good month, um, online as usual. Offline, our poster sites at King's House, Carnegie and the Rundah are all being updated regularly with, um, new events in-house and wider town events as well. We're still continuing to distribute to community notice boards across the town and sharing to community groups placing their centres as well. There are poster packs available on the table here should any councillors want to distribute them across their wards, because I know we've had a chat about that before. Our poster, our event posters and information continue to be sent through to local schools and are being distributed through their newsletters. We're also using the Watson Breckland Council listings and continuing to use other online listings for event advertisers in the town. Um, press releases, we're continuing to share them with local magazines and with the press and newspaper companies. We're on track with those as part of our target. And inside the venues, we've got a new leaflet display up, enabling us to distribute a wider range of events as well as our continued distribution via bars and tables at our other events. Press releases, it's last report, we've had the funding from community groups. Thank you, Terry, for that one. A memorial Christmas tree that went up at the cemetery. Remember it Sunday. Thanks. And the River Champion Fish Pass unveiling. I think those last two just caught the end of the last report. Online, we continue to maintain a positive online presence. The Christmas switch on videos got a really positive response. Lots of people engaged with the events, came down to put parts in the evening and across the weekend. And I've continued to comment on the posts past the events as well, to say how good it was. Uh, online newsletter is now up to 898 subscribers. We're continuing to encourage signups to this. Um, at point of sale for tickets and we've got QR posters and leaflets out in town and at the venue. And the next newsletter is due to go out, uh, at the end of this month. Online, we're also getting a majority of our event tickets coming from our online advertising. We can track that through our ticket source pages. So that is showed a positive result there. Our market coordinator who's sat next to me has been very active on social media, continuing to post videos on Saturdays, introducing our traders and encouraging new ones. We're getting positive responses to these videos and posts. Lots of new trader contacts being made and the followers of the page is growing, which is good. In terms of our other Facebook pages, um, the town council page has just over 200, 2,850 followers. We are still pushing towards our 300 follower. Unfortunately, we didn't quite reach it for the end of 2023, but we are very close. We've made a very big step towards it and we had an increase of 500 new followers in the past year. So I think that is something to be proud of. Um, the reach is just over 54,000 with an engagement still staying fairly steady at 45%. Uh, again, this is all from organic content. None of it is paid for. So it's just our general posts that go out. Although the last few weeks has been slightly lower, looking at our charts. Uh, we do have a bit of a downturn in January normally due to the fact that we closed down at Christmas and there's less posts that go out. But hopefully this will keep going up over the next few weeks with more campaigns going out. Uh, Carnegie and Guildhall complex is now at 2,422 followers. Again, a steady increase. Uh, we're still encouraging further signups and trying to catch those people that are liking and sharing posts as we go. Uh, average reach is over 23,000. The engagement is slightly lower than it has been. Um, again, I think this is just because of the gap over Christmas and because we are doing a lot of advertising of the same events at the moment um, due to the push for things like Panto, but we have got a lot more, um, events coming up next year and we will be looking at video content and things because that will be helping to boost it. Other communications, we've got a list here of other communications we've put out. This isn't all of them. This is just kind of a highlight to show you the different things that we post about.
I'm very happy you're not to read everyone out.
No, absolutely. But yeah, there was just a kind of highlight there for the ones that we put out, um, just to give you an idea of the fact that it is varied. So it's not just our events, it's community events, it's videos, it's, um, things from Breckland and wider as well.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of points. Just trying to find my charger. That's what's going to turn off. Uh, three quick points. Thank you very much, Hazel. Um, Rundah, I'm so pleased to see, uh, that looking so nice and colourful and busy. You know, it's, you know, really colourful to look in town today. I happen to be at the post office. Um, and again, with the poster sites at the Guildhall and Carnegie, I think we're making so much use of all of that now, which is really good. There's a lot of different dates in there. So hopefully, have you got some sort of system? So when the event happens, you know to go and take the poster down?
Yeah, so I check them on a, I'm kind of scheduling it on a weekly basis to go and check it every Monday or Thursday.
Okay, I did. There weren't any out of day today and a couple of people mentioned to me that there was some out of day over Christmas by explaining that you were off and. So, yeah, I mean, the public don't know that, but, um, you know, as long as we keep on top of that, that's good. Um, press releases, I know we aren't putting a few out now, which is good. And again, I don't think there is a system between when we at committee level identify a possible press release. And I don't, I don't know how that kind of gets to you. Uh, I don't think it does. That's my concern.
Yeah, we, um, I've spoken to Alan about this and we are going to try and do more communication within the building. We have got a staff meeting next week. So I hope it will be.
Now, and that is one of the, this topics that was discussed in SMT, how we continue that process down. So that will.
I don't expect you to sit and, you know, check the recording of every meeting. There's got to be some sort of system to tell you, right, you know, this suggestion's come forward. And I would pressure you to come up with some suggestions yourself and come to us. There is a knack to spotting something that might be newsworthy or interesting, but, you know, we are doing so much more as a council than our press releases suggest. You know, the ones we've done nearly, well, I think virtually every single one of them has either been published by the EDP, the Very Free Press or both. We've got a really good success rate with our press releases. Um, so we need to put a few more out really, is what I'm saying, and make full use of that, particularly these days because, um, people aren't reading it so much in the paper, newspaper. They're reading it on the online story and that drives speed into our social media. So I think, you know, the more we do of that, the better. Um, and I was really pleased to see the signups for the newsletter. I didn't know when we're next, doing the next digital newsletter.
Oh, got it at the end of this month.
Okay, good. Well, because I thought that's quite a lot of useful information, um, you know, a thousand people contacting each other. And I just wondered if we're making use of that, you know, can we once in a while, you know, send them a link about something else or whatever?
Yeah, so I think our media policy scheduled them between the other ones, um, the print ones going out, but I think we probably need to look at maybe putting a smaller.
Yeah, just something, I mean, we've got a special event coming up and we really need to plug tickets or, you know, I don't know. But actually, that's a really good resource to have all of those contact details, so.
Anybody else? Nacca, so I've got a question for you. I think historically, um, there's been a lack of engagement between Thetford Town Council and, uh, younger people. In that light, I wonder if we could possibly in the future have a report as well as a very good report on Facebook, have a report on the Instagram account as well, please? Um, because that's, that's where we, you know, the demographic is much younger on Insta than it is on Facebook slash Twitter.
Yeah.
That would be very welcome. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? That's a really, really good idea. We, we are engaging with a lot of students at the moment in terms of art projects. Um, so that's really good. Katie does a writers group, which is adult, um, attended on a Monday evening every two weeks. And we are trying to get them to do guest journalist type stories. But I think maybe we have a conversation with Amber tomorrow to see whether she can use her contacts into the high schools and see whether we can have a guest reporter that comes in and their view of are the council doing enough? What could they do to engage with more young people around the town and some of the ideas of events they want? So I think it's a really good idea. So we'll take that up.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any more comments or questions? In which case we'll move on to, uh, 616, Thetford Town Council Newsletter. To identify articles and other content to be included in the upcoming newsletter. Anybody, any questions or suggestions or ideas for that?
Thanks, Stuart. So the newsletter, um, should be hitting, um, doorsteps, uh, first weekend of April. So that's our, that's our goal. Um, as per our media policy, um, we should bring back or we should bring to the venues and markets committee to try and gauge councillors' ideas of potential content as the agenda item says. Um, it's a really busy time because it will cover a period of April to October. So it's the whole of our civic season pretty much. It's all of our town events, um, all of our market phase events we're planning. So it's going to be, uh, a challenge to get all of this into an eight-page newsletter. So, um, there may be, there may be a view that we try and expand it possibly if we, if we have a lot of content. But what we want to do is to try and get some other ideas as to, we've got things like the events, Thetford in Bloom, if we're going to do that this year. Um, we've got some big event ideas that are coming up through the, uh, through the summer. The continental market is coming back three times at Witson in August. Uh, and then at Christmas, Christmas is outside of this one. When they're here in August, we will be doing not the seaside special as we did last year, but it's a variation of it. So it'll be a big town event. Um, and we've got some really interesting, um, venue events to do. So I think there's a lot that we can promote within the newsletter. We talked to, uh, a partner company in, um, resurrecting and developing a new partnership with comedy clubs. Um, so, and they come up with a very interesting concept that we could work across two venues in terms of having a smaller, smaller sort of intimate comedy club and then gearing up to a big one in the Carnegie every so often with a headline act. So that's a different approach than we've done with other comedy clubs in the past. So there's lots of things that we can talk about in this newsletter. But I just wonder whether councillors have got any other ideas that they want to throw into the mix. The process from here, Vic, is that, um, we will put together the basic layout and as before, as long as committee, um, is happy with it, we worked more closely with, um, Chair Terry Land and Council of Germy because of their experience with respect. Uh, and we've got a bigger lead in time to this one. So we should have an opportunity to maybe even bring a final draft back or we can send around that final draft before we go to, uh, to get the professional layout and, and the print. And then out on the, on, on the early part of April, that's our deadline. But I think we've given ourselves enough time this time to do it. But we've got to start from.
One of the things we've been talking about since we've been looking at sports council.
Okay.
And that might be something, if it gets off the ground, might be something that we can use in the newsletter to sort of advertise. And in all remaining, that we could get the sports team, uh, clubs together and things like this, because I think that's what we need to do more.
But if we, if we can't do it within the printed newsletter, that's certainly something we can profile in the digital newsletter. So any, any ideas whether they, whether they go into our, our town newsletter, certainly throw them into the office and we'll try and get them into digital ones. I think Terry's idea, it's Hazel about digital newsletters. I don't think, in the past, we've been a little bit regimented and thought that they might fill the monthly gaps in between. I don't think we need to be that regimented. If we've got something really we want to shout about, let's get it out, just get it out to the thousand people that are interested in understanding what we do.
Totally. Thank you, David. Terry?
Yeah, um, I think last time we, we worked on the basis of we had, we had eight pages and the articles were sort of padded out a little bit. They're sort of like whole, whole press releases to pad them out. And I think what we need to do the next time is to have smaller articles, but more variety. Um, by then, uh, the website will be all singing, all dancing. So smaller articles, but refer people to the website for the main information. Um, you know, maybe even bung a few sort of QR codes and that sort of thing in there to make it easier for people. I think that'd be really good. Um, presumably there'll be an article on the website saying it's now live. Did you know you could do all these wonderful things on there? Um, uh, because we want to drive people to the website, you know, paper's expensive, you know, to produce, it'll go up from eight to 16 actually is expensive.
Remember when we spoke about before? So that's our alternative. That's our, we have to double it. We can't say a 12 page.
To get the economies of scale, you have to go up in eights. You can do 12, but you're probably paying the same for 12 pages as you would be for 16. Okay, so it's just the way the paper is.
So we need to be clever in the way we lay it up.
You're basically paying the same because they have to cut the paper, then they don't use the paper, they cut it straight away. So you're paying for it, so. Um, yeah, eights is the, is the way. Um, and there's a agenda item for full council next week, which I don't know about yet. Um, but if it's approved, um, there'll be an event taking place in the Carnegie, probably in April. Um, it's called participatory budgeting. Um, and the idea is that there's quite a significant underspend at the council at the moment. Um, so the proposal will be for £25,000 to be made available to local groups and the public vote for who gets a share of that money. And, um, the proposal to go into council next week will ask that, um, the magazine, county, our town newsletter highlights who the groups are asking for money and encourages people to come and vote for them.
I mean, one of the features that we did on the first issue was to highlight our small grants scheme and actually we had some really good responses for that, you know.
I don't highlight that anymore.
No, I've got too many other questions. But it seemed to work.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, yeah.
And also the mayor's dinner did as well, didn't it? We got quite a few from that.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got a quick list of things that I think we kind of just sort of quickly discussed that we should cover in it. Uh, we've got Setford in Bloom, hanging baskets, because they will be coming up, obviously upcoming town events. We were talking about a mayoral update with Terry yesterday. And I've quickly briefed Stuart on the fact that he's going to be helping with that, um, today.
I, I, sorry, I, we also discuss, I don't know whether, I also think that this, this is very clear to the end of his term.
Yes.
So I think we need to do this double whammy, you know, what, what's the best features of the final year of the outgoing mayor? But what's the anticipated use of the incoming one? So we, we get an interview with both of you, Chris, so, and Stuart. That'd be nice, introductory.
Drop that in. Um, annual town meeting and mayor making as well need to be in it.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that because last year was a disaster. The annual town meeting was a disaster. There was only three members at a public area. There's all councils and public. So we really need to.
Push those two.
I don't know. It's not been approved by council yet, but the proposal that will be going forward will be for mayor making and annual town meeting to be on the same night.
Can I just answer, I mean, can I just ask a question about that? Because, um, so the annual town meeting is technically the mayor's meeting. So it's the current mayor's meeting.
Yeah.
When we did this in the past, because that was the usual process, we did it in a funny order in that respect then. You all came in for mayor making and then you did the annual town meeting. So maybe we have to do it, annual town meeting, you then go and get roped up and you come back in to do it for. So we have to think about how we're going to present that. But we struggle, we have struggled to make annual town meetings sexy enough to attract people and it's just not happening.
I'm pretty sure the first one I went to worked that way.
Yeah.
We had the actual meeting first, then we went off and got roped up and came back and done all the stuff.
Okay. Or the other way around, but yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way we have to do it, I would think.
If anyone has anything to add, feel free to ping me emails. I'm more than happy to share things, even if it's just a Facebook post. We can do it.
Has anyone else got anything now? Because I've got two. Um, D-Day, 80th celebration, I'm sure that's on your list already, actually.
Yeah, you mentioned those two.
Um, and, uh, the Ramsay Way allotments. I think that's a real win.
Has that been?
Depending on.
Tomorrow night. Ramsay Close, you keep saying Ramsay Way.
Did I say Ramsay Way?
Yeah, don't say Ramsay Way tomorrow. You'll all get lynched.
Yep.
It's Ramsay Close.
I should go and have a look. It's separate from the Close.
Well, I'm hoping the allotments are going to be the, um, the territory allotments. That's mine. Was it right? Anyway, sorry. Uh, yeah, any further suggestions? Uh, we'll move on to 617, Thetford Town Council website. Um, it's going live for the weekend tomorrow.
Yep.
Um, to you.
So we, we, you know, we have had some feedback from Terry and also Doug. Um, and we've addressed some of those things. One of the, so before we get into where we are with the website, one of the suggestions or one of the concerns is that we'd spoken about, um, a councillor login page, a private page within the website. And I had a quick chat with Terry on Monday and, um, and I think, well, I've got a, I've got a conversation, I've got a telephone conversation with, um, uh, our IT support, um, tomorrow. And one of the things that I think would be a better option, because this could be that the web designer has to build it for an extra cost. I understand where we want to get to. We want a private area where we can, um, share information internally. But we have a SharePoint on our system and SharePoint can develop an Intranet web hub in its own right. And I think that would be a lot easier. The information is already on SharePoint. We can drop and dump into it. And we can keep that populated a lot more. If we did it this way round, yes, you can have a private space on a website, but it means there's an extra process of taking it from where it sits at the moment, which is SharePoint and put it into another format. It will, it will be no different in the concept in terms of it will be an Intranet, it will be a very private zone. And I've seen some of the examples that other organisations, businesses as well as councils use. And they really are, uh, you know, fantastic mediums to use to share information across businesses and organisations. So I'm going to have a conversation with Jeff tomorrow and I'm happy to share the thoughts that he's got. He's, he seems to think it's, uh, we've already got the templates there. It's just him implement it and then we can populate it. So we're ready to go fairly quickly. Um, so I don't know what the council's thoughts are on that. It still serves the purpose and achieves the ultimate objective, but.
I certainly have a few on that. Um, does anybody else?
I don't really, because I'm not good with that sort of stuff. I just want websites out and going.
And you just, you don't have a private login and you can just to your heart and ten pound, all the information that we've got, all our website, uh, all our newsletter information will be dumped there. Committee meetings and other documents that are possibly outside of that, believing supporting documents can be there. So you can drop in at any, at any time at your leisure to, to see what's going on. We don't do very well internally as officers to share across the two main departments that we have. Um, we are getting better because we've got Hazel to, to badger either of us to try and identify those. But I looked at our SharePoint the other day and the news story on our internal, uh, site was, um, saying goodbye to Baber for, because she was pregnant and she was leaving on maternity leave. She's other child, he must be, God knows how many months old now. So we are not utilising that facility and it's free. We've got it now. It seems crazy that we're not developing that as, as staff and councillors. So I think it's, I think it's something that we need to explore. And I think it will serve the purpose. I don't know.
Um, I don't entirely understand the technology, but, um, is that something that councillors would have to come into the office to access or is that someone that can access from?
Have your own personal login.
Okay. One of the motivations of pushing for a councillor space for me was we had this ridiculous, and we still have it now, where there are so many new councillors with, that don't have access to historical documents. And, you know, particularly I've been finding the last six months with Stanleyforth, because all of the documents that we've had by being on Stanleyforth, you know, I've been there, you know, however long. And I can, eventually I can search in me emails and it's there.
Yeah.
But new councillors don't get that. Um, and there's no, you know, once people are elected, they should be able to have a sort of bedtime reading pack essentially. And if they don't want to know, don't know. But if they do want to know and find out information, they should be able to put their hand on.
All of that, very, will be there.
Okay.
Because for staff, but for officers, they are dumped into SharePoint, but in a different folder. Some of them are protected because you have HR folders, you have senior managers' folders, things like that. So they're protected that certain staff can get in. All this will be, it will be a bigger version of a folder that we, we call an Intranet. Um, that will have pages that will have archive documentation for this. So all of our committees, which are not secret to staff, so they, they shouldn't be with councillors, they wouldn't sit outside here. They would be put into a folder within them. So that's your go-to place. So if you want to, you know, if you want to dip in for bedtime reading, that's your go-to place. So I, I think let's explore it and then we'll share it with you guys and you can make the decision.
I have, um, any other comments to us? I'll have some to add. Carla?
I was going to say, I think it's a good idea to make any previous documents available to new councillors, especially because there are recurrent issues. The allotments, the cemeteries, there's many things that we, they have to decide on, we have to decide on, that has been dealt with before. So this is sort of a history there that needs to be understood before decision-making. So I definitely think that should be a pack files that we made available from the point somebody takes on councillor post for them to understand. Obviously, it's up to the person to consult and to take the time for it. Uh, whether or not they do that bedtime reading. But if they choose to do it, so to have a better view of what's going on, then if they should, they should be able.
Give you a practical example. So at the last Stanleyforth, we were talking about, um, the contractor for the gardens. Now, I know that we debated that as a committee and we agreed a specification and that's what the contractors went with.
Yeah.
But nobody can find it.
No.
And I can't find it on my emails because it's so old. Um, but we should, you know, we should know what the basic specification is for the grounds maintenance contracts, you know, 20 odd grand a year is very important. Um, but nobody can find it. So, you know, I should better know as a councillor where that is on the system. Other people should be able to look at what's involved. And so, same for the town council contract, you know, tender specifications, what, what are we paying these people to? And I think that would save a lot of hassle going to officers because we can look for ourselves without. Can you send me this, please?
I think it all becomes more clear and transparent and accessible for everybody and, and it allows us to make much better informed decisions. We understand each other.
And that's, but that's more about the principle rather than the practice. You know, either way, that is appropriate, isn't it? Whether we do it by SharePoint or on the website.
Right, as long as it's available.
My frustration is that we asked for this months, months ago. And now we're discussing this a week before launch. And that's a real frustration. Um, I don't see really why we should suddenly, um, be, be asked to change course seven days before the website goes live. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm quite frustrated about that.
I know it's best to do it at the starting point, but once we're at this stage, uh, the, the development of the website could then now be added with section of website and still fix the problem that way, still make them available within having a link there that takes it to a certain part of the website or a file, that will make this available to whoever needs to check them.
And again.
Nothing, I suppose.
Yeah. And again, we've been a long time getting this. I, I wonder if we're going to be a similar amount of time getting SharePoint set up.
No, because SharePoint is set up.
So all the files are on there already.
So outside, outside this meeting, when we finish this meeting, because I can't do, I don't, I'm, you know, I'm not that technical. I dare not stop this presentation. So outside this meeting, I'll show you SharePoint before you leave.
Okay.
Actually, I mean, there's a never to be going to be a cost with the website option as, you know, nature of the beast. So should we give SharePoint a go? And then if we don't like it, we can always try. So should we give SharePoint a go? And then if we don't like it, we can always look at the other option that might be a way forward if it's free.
I mean, hey, to be fair, I understand Terry's frustrations and I respect that view. I, I really do. But I mean, Hazel said to me the other day, I can, I can set up this councillor page. I think, I, I think you needed the web designer. Yes, we should have done this earlier. We needed the web designer to make sure that there was all the protections around it, because we're talking about a public website. But there is the issue then of time. Um, we should have started earlier, Terry, but, you know, there's going to be time to dump all of those documents into a website when literally it's there. So what we're doing is we're dragging, dropping it into the new SharePoint, um, system, which is protected. It will be something that we can do really quickly. And, and overnight, almost, you will get access. Once we say it's there, overnight, you will get access to all of those documents.
And that would be via our, um, our normal logins, I guess.
I mean, you know, so, um, and what we need to do is I've spoken to Alan, I mean, actually, Alan, when I spoke to Alan about this, he said, well, funny enough, GWS, you are creating a SharePoint Intranet site. And so, so it's, it's already in progress for, for GWS. So I think we, you know, we just need to go down the line. We'll have a bigger one because we're a bigger organisation, but, um.
As long as we don't get the situation where we're handed a hard copy folder that we're not allowed to take out of the room.
Yes, absolutely.
A stab a sore subject.
We've got it home, yeah.
That would be impractical.
Yeah, the less said about, better. Any other questions regarding the website? We're so close now. I can almost touch it. I came to David on Monday with a, well, Doug and I, uh, emailed probably the weekend before, yeah, um, with a number of suggestions. Can we guarantee they'll all be up and running on the first?
Pretty certain they've all been done by one.
What's the one that happened? You know, I'm going to ask that.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, because my packet sat on my desk. I ticked it off at six o'clock last night.
So the, the big two for me was the stuff about the council login, which I think we resolved.
Yeah, but that was.
And the other one was, uh, details of officers.
So I spoke, so yeah, let me bring you up to speed on that one, because I've spoken to Alan this afternoon. And what we are looking to do, uh, Terry, is I know councillors are really keen. I mean, we've, we've talked to death the, the issues across Christmas, which is, which cannot happen again. So what we are doing is there is an issue with trying to get staff agree to details for them to be on site. Now, I think, I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's in another committee meeting. I'm not sure whether it's been absolutely approved that we are going to go with this, uh, on duty call type thing that we're going to cover. Has it been approved? So, so we are having a staff meeting next week and I'm sure Alan will bring that up. We're looking to try and encourage a group of six to eight people that will roster through that. The three senior managers will be part of that regardless. The three senior managers are in a different, um, organisational position. We have a duty to be part of that contact. So Alan, myself and Nick will have a photograph, will have our job title, will have our responsibilities. And if you have an issue about anything, we are the go-to people. It's then our job, if needs be, to delegate it down to other people to, to, to do, to, um, create that. So we will also have an emergency number. So out of office and at times you will contact this number and leave a message. And the on-duty officer, we won't name that person, the on-duty officer will deal with the issue as soon as possible. So there will be an opportunity to know this is where they go to. There will be other, um, contacts. So if you've got a, I mean, it might not just be a complaint, but do you know what? Want to hire the venue? So if you want to hire the venue, contact venue at Fetter Town Council. If you have an issue with cemeteries or want more information about, uh, your contact cemeteries app. So we are now developing and it will be done by the time of launch. That will be done. We, we then would have to, so we will be past the launch date by the time of that meeting. So that might be ongoing as we get other key staff members that will say, okay, I don't mind having my photo, my job title, my, you know, if, because I've got a key job to do. But not everyone is. So I don't think we need to have a victorial organisational chart up with people that they can get into with respect, members of staff that are not responsible to take on those kind of emergency calls. But I think it will facilitate the needs of what the councillors are after in terms of taking out you as that emergency call, because that's not, we're paid to do that, you know. So I don't know what your feelings are, um, in terms of what we're proposing to do for launch date. It solves the immediate problem. It shows these other people responsible, these are the go-to, and the emergency contact out of ours is this. And there will be someone rostered behind that number to deal with those issues.
Anybody? Um, my, my issue is one of not so much about, I, I mean, the emergency stuff is, is an issue. It's about engagement. This is, you know, we keep talking about our council. It's about giving the public engagement with the reality of the people who are there. And from that point of view, I think it's a good thing to have as many people, yeah, you don't have to have pictures. Name and email is enough. Name, email and responsibility.
And, and there will be a person behind that. We all know that person. At cemeteries, at Fetter Town Council, for example, we know that person. We don't have to advertise to the world that, but we have had, Terry, members of staff, as I'm sure councillors have undergone this, which is out of order. We've had members of staff accosted in supermarkets outside their job because they are the face of a problem which is not of their doing. So it would be wrong that a contractor fails to open gates and the person who's a cemetery officer would be accosted in a supermarket, just as it shouldn't have been your problem over the Christmas period. But we are developing that contact and emergency list to make sure someone deals with it. We don't have to advertise who it necessarily is, as long as someone's going to do it and will be answerable for it. Again, as I say, Alan, Nick and myself, the roles that we have are different. We accept that responsibility. And we are those go-to people in those areas. So, you know, but I, I personally, and this is my personal view, if someone was, if someone was employed as a receptionist, for instance, I wouldn't expect her to go through that when I get paid to do that, or Nick gets paid to do that, or Alan gets paid to do that, or anyone that agrees to be the emergency on-call officer. So I think we've achieved what you're after. But we've just been a bit more accommodating. We're taking people out of the firing line, but we've achieved the process of resolving situations.
Okay, any comments, Terry? And we've had this conversation before and I'm a bit disappointed we're having it again, to be honest with you. If people are already being accosted and we don't have their photos on the website, they'll continue to be accosted regardless. If you work for, if you work for a public body, most people normally know you work for a public body like the town council, Brecon, whatever. I'm pretty certain the conclusion we came to last time is that anybody who is happy to have their photo online um, and their email address and their work phone number, not talking about people's personal contact details. These are council-paid for mobile phones. Um, and if they are a suitable level of, you know, staff, management, whatever, then it should be on the website. I, I don't want to go down the route of forcing staff if they're unhappy. Um, I can live with that. But, you know, if you go on Swaffham Town Council website.
Yeah.
And if you go on down-the-market Town Council website. Staff are listed. And for the, you know, for groundsman, it's the office number. Because you wouldn't expect Joe Public to be ringing up a groundsman. You'd expect them to ring the manager and that's why the manager's mobile number is there. But, uh, you know, I think actually an awful lot of our staff are proud to work for Fetter Town Council. They shouldn't be hiding the fact. Uh, and if they're not, that's fine. We can, you know, I'm not going to out them publicly on the website. I'm happy to respect their, uh, their wish. But I'd like to think actually there's a number that are actually prepared to go on there.
And that question will be asked at the staff meeting on the second of February, but clearly it's after the date of the launch. So it might be something that we change. But what we need to do is address the issues that we've got. And this is a first step to resolve those issues.
As Terry says, we've, we've, we've addressed this before. And so again, I'm disappointed that we're coming back to this. If people don't want their photo on there, that's fine. We can put a silhouette of a head on there. Not a problem. I think the name and the email and the responsibility is probably okay for anyone. Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
And so just confirm, David, what is you want them to do as a sort of interim measure? And bear in mind you've got the meeting on the second.
The interim me- measure is to have the three senior managers on there in, with the photo, the contact details, responsibilities. The other areas will be, um, would, would be sort of, uh, resolved through that generic email. So the cemetery's officer would be up behind the cemetery's at Fetter Town Council. And this is the, uh, council officer number and here's the mo-, here's the, uh, email address. So again, those issues would be addressed. Now, we, I mean, no disrespect, and I take your point. I mean, let's take our market coordinator that's sitting here.
Who you work for.
I mean, you know, Stacey, Stacey was interviewed. She knew what the, uh, what the job was. We, she was told in that interview, because I was part of that interview panel, that we wanted her to be the face of the council. And blimey, she's taken it on board and she's done a great job. But some people are very, I mean, do you know what? If I, if my photo has got to go on there, you know, it's going to be something when I'm about thirty-five. But I mean, you know, because I don't like having my photo taken, but I understand my role and I understand my responsibilities. And that's what, I saw that at Swaffham and I thought, you know, yeah, I, I've got not, I, you walk into schools and hospitals and you see, I haven't, I haven't got a problem with it. And I shouldn't have a problem with it because I get paid for that aspect of the job. But there are others that I think are a little bit more sceptical about it. But we're going to redress it at the, uh, at the staff meeting next week. But I'm just thinking as a first step, let's go down this route so we can resolve some of the issues now. And then we'll have that discussion with staff on the second. And then hopefully several of them might say, I haven't got a problem. I don't know what all the fuss is about. But some of them will do and we'll have to respect that, I feel.
I, I'm personally happy with that. I'm, you know, disappointed that we've sort of backtracked on what we said we would do. But as long as we get the, um, senior management team on there in the short term and lead by example in, in many ways, um, and then it can evolve after the conversation on the second. If nobody wants to go on there, then we'll be fairly empty. But, uh, I, you know, let, let's go about it the right way. And we've not had it forever. So I'm sure we can wait a little bit longer.
But I mean, if there's people that, uh, that are quite happy, I mean, we have a markets at Fetter Town Council contact for new stall holders. I mean, you know, one of the other ones that won't, won't blink at that is Stacey. So let's get Stacey on there because, I mean, she already is a, you know, someone who's, who's in, I mean, you know, maybe I'm overplaying it, but I know there's a couple of people who are around here. Maybe, you know, eighty percent of them will be. So maybe a compromise then is let me go back to Alan tomorrow and say, let's have a, a general discussion. And if people are resistant of it, let's have a wider discussion on the second. But if there's anybody such as someone like Stacey that I can't see the problem, let's do it. Then we'll get them on.
And, and not wait until the next meeting of this committee. I'm happy with it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Chris, uh, just, sorry, was it Carla first?
Yeah, it's fine. I was just going to say, I didn't realise this was going to be such a big issue. Because I just assumed that when you sign up to work at a local authority in public service, automatically you know you're putting yourself in a position where you work in a public place, where your details are going to be public for the services you provide. I think it almost comes with the package nowadays. It's almost expected of you if that happens. Can understand some people may be reluctant about it and obviously, and some convincing money would need doing. But it is expected if you work for public service that automatically your role includes being visible to the public. And that means that you have to take the sweet with sour. It's the same thing with elected councillors. There'll be people that will love us, people that will hate us, but that's the, that's the, that's the whole crux of the, of the job. It is, we're public and we have to, when we put ourselves towards that position, we open ourselves to comment, good or bad. It's just the, it's just the role in public. I don't, I did not realise this was going to be such a big issue. I just assumed that the civil servants would be available to be public, public from the moment they take on the role. I shouldn't have to be asked about them. At least from my perspective. But if that's not the case, then clearly we have an issue that is to be dealt with.
So if, if we agreed for me to, um, to talk to staff tomorrow, Carla, it may not be as big an issue as what we're probably. But if there are one or two out of the nineteen employees that we've got, it depends on their role, I suppose. You know, if they're in a really key position that there's no other mechanism to support the issues and to resolve those issues, we've got a bit of a problem. I don't think we have. So I, I don't want to make something out, I think I'm saying too much now.
Can I just say, in all institutions, as the way in reception, you do. Let's say somebody's in witness protection and it's on the job of the council or they for any other, and, and, and the other reason they, they, you know, you never know, or maybe for other legal, you know, basically millionaires. For whatever reason, they need to be, go under the weight that they can't have their faces exposed or whatever. That is something, that is something that they should think through and be put on the table when they take on the job. Not after.
Thanks, Carla. Um, Chris.
I'm just having a look and cur- curious over Terry's about Swaffham. I was looking through Brecon. And their senior team is all in pitches. Their people underneath, all they've got is their titles and sex, which I think is a problem.
Which would be sufficient.
As long as the people agree.
Yeah, but, but, but there are some roles, and I'll go back to Stacey. Stacey is very, very public-facing and, you know, actually a picture to put a face to the inquiry. So when they pitch up on market day morning for the very first time, oh yeah, I know who I'm reporting to. Yeah, I know we've got Stacey uniform and lanyards and things like that, but she's a busy girl on market day. She could be all over the place and stuff like that. So.
I think we're, I think we're repeating our. One final thing, website. Would you be testing it across platforms or across devices?
Yeah, so we've, uh.
So, so, you know, does it, does it work on Firefox, Chrome, Opera, Edge and all the rest of it? Does it work simply on that? And also, does it work on a tablet? Does it work on a phone? Does it work on a PC?
So we need to speak to Ryan about, um, all of those mediums, but, uh, you know, this is a generic open source website. So it, it wor- it's WordPress, so it should work on all of those, but we need to, we need to, um, test that before we go. I know, I think Jeff, um, Doug has said in one of his comments that he had a little bit of trouble with his mobile, but yeah, it might just be that.
Okay, um, it's really more on the website, please. No. So we move on, uh, to six one seven. Uh, no, we don't. We move on to six one eight, weekly markets. Stacey, it's your moment.
Welcome. Oh, well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me on.
Nice to meet you all. What do you like to know? I've enjoyed the job. I've been, obviously I've been doing it three months. I feel personally it's great. I've, um, got some nice cameras in, um, and hopefully to secure some more. I'm in the middle of talking with others at the moment. January was, um, it's quite a lesson in an eye-opener, January, that's for sure. And what with the weather being so horrible anyway. But I have spoken to traders that have been coming to the market twenty years, thirty-five years. So they're, they're obviously more about it than me. Um, and January as a whole is not the greatest of months. It never has been. So I take their word for it. They're, they're more fit than me. And even though I am still there from wind, rain, gales, sunshine, I'm a brilliant layer of sunshine, but I can't predict the weather, but I'm still there no matter what. Um, and so a lot of the traders, they're very, very good, um, as well. So I don't really know what else to say apart from if there's any questions. Yes.
Got a couple. Please just ignore my ignorance because, um, I, I, I see the market from my office window, but I don't visit this market much. Work.
Why is that?
Why?
Do not get lunch breaks.
Have you got sort of numbers like the new stalls? Because I know there's new stalls, I can see them. And then there's a couple of questions. And sort of, have you got any promises of people coming that said they will? And someone says something about hot, hot food, thanks. And someone says something about hot food, thanks?
Yes, the one, which one are you talking about? You're talking about Tony, the high mash man?
Well, I think it's more, I think it's more generalised.
Yeah, generally. Believe you me, if you've seen my post on a Saturday, I, I almost feel like I'm begging for somebody to come and do hot food. Yeah. And, and I'm always up for, if people know anybody or suggest anybody, then please put them my way. I'd like to think that I've got a magic wand, I just don't have one.
No, don't expect that.
No, but I just.
Is there any progress on them?
Well, I have a tea lady, so Brew Daisy, she's come to join us the first week of February. But as for food, hot food, no. I did have one guy, but the minute I asked for some details, I haven't heard since. So I can't, I'm not going to say that he's coming. So, but all I can do is ask.
Kind of a pink truck, isn't it?
Ask, no, not that particular guy, no, no, I've been warned of that one. That's a definite no, I can tell you.
Can I just say, I mean, honestly, Stacey has worked really hard to try and get food vendors there. We thought there was going to be one that was not just what you, you class as a traditional market sort of burger van. We want to send a little bit of market and we, yeah. And, and blimey, as soon as we thought we pinned him down and we got a start date, he opened a shop in.
So Market.
So Market. So, you know, he couldn't come.
He's the one who said, but.
No, this is another one. I mean, honestly, we, you know, you're going, you're going through, you know, almost like the telephone book to try and get someone there. With respect, I mean, the two, the two things that are the enemies of the market are other weather. And we are going through some poor weather at the moment, so. But also it's footfall and it's that catch twenty two really. You know, we need these traders to make it vibrant, to increase footfall. But they need footfall to be there to stay long term.
Yeah, which is why we introduced.
So.
Reduced rates for new.
And, and reduced rates have worked well because, because, you know, we've got five new stalls. And when you think about what we had before Stacey arrived, just three months ago, she'd almost doubled the market. So, so that's great. But we are in a period where it's going to be very difficult. March, what we must do, because we didn't have Stacey through the good weather period, we're hoping that we can really encourage people to come. The weather will, weather will fall off one of our issues. Footfall will be still a problem. But the fact that they're paying reduced rates, they're going to say, look, I'll give it six weeks and hopefully. And then also during the summer, what does work well is we do events around the market to make the place a bit more vibrant anyway. We've introduced some music, haven't we, to, you know, some background music, which were suggestions from the stall holders to make it a bit more vibrant. So she's working it well. We're trying to get suggestions off them. So I think, you know, you're doing really well, I think. But in the next few weeks, the weather will change and then I think people will come and we'll have more stalls. The idea is that we're now going to sit down and think about how we can make sure that that, that's activated from March onwards and we don't miss any months. So what's our marketing campaign? Let's go and look for those craft stalls and all those kind of people and encourage them to come. Remind them that the council's reduced the rates. You won't get a better rate for your markets or anywhere in this area type thing. And hopefully we can encourage them. Now, the other conundrum that we've got is the more successful she becomes, we have our stock. So if you're a new trader that thinking, yeah, I'm a crafter, but I'll give it a go. It looks quite interesting. It's a nice way to trade. I'm going to need my gazebo as a bit of a starter and if I make a go of it, I'll buy. Tanis was a classic example. First couple of weeks, we provided the gazebo as part of the support. And she said, you know what, this is great. And she went out and bought her own and branded it up, which was fantastic. So, but we need some additional ones. Those gazebos are ten, twelve years old. They were bought through MTF money twelve years ago. We have five decent ones. You've repaired some frames that are in good nick. We just need some new canopies now.
Before, before we get out to this, I think we need to concentrate on Stacey's role.
Okay.
Yeah, really. Have we got any more questions on that?
I don't want to be critical, but because it is good work. I'm not being critical, Jack.
No, please.
I don't mind. So do you sort of go into trader magazines and? And you're square, because I've seen you on Facebook.
Yeah, so it's basically social media's thing right now.
Again, all platforms or just?
No, just on, just on Facebook. I'm really interested in doing the Instagram thing because on Facebook, there's lots of engagements. And obviously there's lots of, I can give you figures, but the, the most engagement on there is between sort of the thirty and forty five range, age range. So, and I do think, I mean, I'm born in Redthertford, so I know pretty well. And I do think that is the majority of Thetford. What you've got to think about is on a Tuesday for one. For me, I think you need to be looking at slightly different traders, as in on a Tuesday. Most people like ourselves will work Monday to Friday. Most traders and the most footfall that you're going to get on a Tuesday is either young mothers that have had babies and they're off, the elderly and the retired. But not being funny, I don't, I don't need to be rude.
No, no.
The most, the most majority of like, when, when it says engagement, so when I'm doing a Facebook post on a Saturday, a lot of that engagement is between the thirty and forty five year olds, but the majority are off because it's the weekend. So you are going to get that engagement. But on a Tuesday, really, I'm, I'm thinking more of traders coming that would get more footfall for those older, sorry, generation people. I don't mean that to be rude in any way, shape or form. But in Thetford, that's what's going to happen because that's the people that are here.
Which is what we're welcome.
So, yeah, that, they, they are Thetford people. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that there's going to be surrounding areas. But whether those surrounding areas, whether they have bus journeys in or whether some of those can even drive. So, and Saturday is always going to be your biggest footfall because obviously then you've got the people that do work Monday to Friday and they do come with their children and they will come to the fruit and vegetable and they will get their bread and their flowers for their mother-in-laws, hopefully. But you will always have a bigger footfall on the Saturday than you will on a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's just, I'm not, so I'm not being grateful because you are doing fantastic work and, and yet anyone can see it's grown. And I'm sure the football has increased.
It has increased and I've had some really good feedback from traders, if I'm honest. I mean, I've only just been doing the job three months. And like I say, some of them traders have been going thirty five years. And I have had not one negative feedback from them traders like we were talking about.
That's not entirely true.
Wow, okay. Well, I hope to say that's not personally, personally on me. That's just their situation. But at the end of the day, we have, I have called in other people and they have stayed. So they have come on the basis of, we'll give it a try, we'll give it a try. And I'm pleased to say that because of my character, that's what you want to say, and my drive, that actually they've stayed. So, and they come regularly. They haven't come through January because obviously the winter months and they're spending time with their family, I'll get that. But they're still under casuals, so they are, can come and go however they please. So for me to get feedback to say that we are coming backstage because like you are enthusiastic, you're so helpful, you're this and you're that, that's amazing to me. It feels amazing to me. But also good for Thetford, hopefully. It's a positive thing that I'm going to be, these stores will stay.
Any more, any more questions for Terry?
Yeah, I've got a few bits. Firstly, I'm a big believer in positivity breeds positivity. And it's so lovely to see somebody smiling, stood on the market square on a video. And I think. I've never saw you on a video.
So Stacey's going on holiday in a couple of weeks' time, so.
So you won't get that smiling face.
I'll tell you Facebook.
You won't get that smiling face.
But I think actually, if we don't talk up the market, who will? And I think that's really important. And I've noticed that the general public actually haven't been as negative and critical of the market on social media. And it's so lovely to see that other people are being positive. So that aspect of it top marks. I'm so, every Saturday, because it's me that approves your posts on Thetford forum and stuff. Yes.
I will just say that one of the stall holders, he is, do I remember, is he? Do I remember? Yeah, anyway, his mum, obviously she doesn't speak any English. But obviously when I do the videos, he said to me, Stacey goes, my mum watched your video. He said, and all she said to me is, I don't understand a word that lady is saying, but she is so smiley and enthusiastic. And I thought that was a really nice compliment. She didn't understand a word I said, but she did.
Even if you don't watch the video, you can see that it's bright, it's colourful, it's smiling, I think that's.
And in this weekend, I had somebody walk across the marketplace and go, are you doing a video today, Stacey? And I was like, oh, yeah. And he was like, good, because I watch them every week. Yeah, I was like, oh, good.
You're getting a fan following you. So that's good. Something I would really push you to do is some sort of welcome pack.
Okay.
So not just for yourself, so when you go out proactively looking for traders, but for us as councillors, when we're out and about at other markets, occasionally we go to other markets or craft fairs or whatever. So have you thought about coming to Thetford? We do, we do an introductory round, which is a blooming good offer.
Yeah.
And we need to be promoting that, you know, this is Thetford, here's some pictures, I'm Stacey, these are the rates, these are the pitch sizes. This is what we offer you, wastage. I mean, the fact that we offer the waste disposal steel, we offer the, because, you know, the offer is strong, but we're not promoting it.
Yeah.
So a welcome pack would be good.
Quickly just add to that, that should be going to the market traders themselves, shouldn't it? Because they go around the other markets. Obviously, they're the first point, they're our first sell, aren't they?
Does that mean that if I, if we, if we produced one of those, is it, I'm so sorry, because obviously it's my first point, does it mean that you guys produce it, is what I'm saying, as in a leaflet way?
Well, I would do.
You can do it. Yeah.
I would produce, so in publishing, we have what we call a media pack. It's your rate stage, it's a highway wonderful title leaflet. And put it in a little pack and you pay for essentially the printing and get it produced, a little, you know, a little A five pack and with all the information and, and get, you know, two hundred and fifty of them printed, some for you, some for us. And some for the other traders.
Because you're right. I think this is an aspect, I think this is an aspect we really haven't utilised, which is our best resource possibly for promoting the market, is the market traders. Because they go around all the other markets. They have contacts on all the other markets.
Especially, and especially now we've got the, you know, refer a friend type deal going up. And that's been important. Now that you're established, I would be quite keen for us to set up meetings with the traders. So probably about twice a year where they, you know, come to the Guildhall, I come to chat to councillors. And I quite want them, because at some point this year, we're going to have to produce or review the traders' terms and conditions. Let's get them in and have a chat with them about what they think about the terms. How can we, you know, I've, I've been here fifteen years and I've never been in a room where market traders have been and had a conversation, apart from when they came to the council and had a go at us about weather swings. We should be having dialogue with them and working together.
I have just done a solo.
Yeah, you, yeah.
I've got traders talking that solo.
Brilliant.
So I had all of that, so I had all that feedback if you want to.
No, that'd be great. That's the sort of thing we should be doing. Let's get, you know, get a tea and on some cake, have a chat. How's it going? What more can we do? What more can you do as traders to help it? I think that's really important. I think we need to be working more with the continental markets, between our market and the continental markets. Because they are really successful and they sell, we want our traders to sell.
I, I have quietly heard, I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't go as strongly as say criticism, but an observation from the market traders that they feel that the continental market takes away from them. And their, their attitude is, we're here every week and they come twice a year and create a lot.
So I, I, I can tell you though, I've heard the opposite. And, and Simon, the plant man, for instance, said, they can come back again. And I'd say, well, they will be.
That's all right, because he's on the corner.
He is on the corner. So, I mean, what the continental market does do is it brings footfall. And that, as I said, that's one of the two big success factors.
So.
But what we need to do is to make sure that people, because I, I mean, you know Vic, unless you're going to go to somewhere like Roy's, you know, you don't cross the post office at King Street. And it's a hard job, just as it's a hard job to get them from the entrance into the garden sometimes at King's house. It's hard to get them into that market space.
So my, my suggestion would be drag the continental market part of it into that space, so it's part of it.
Yeah, I mean, we did, I mean, years ago, we did have that sort of, Susan Goss made that funny sort of market trader cutout figure that was put on the thingy saying market this way, which was silly because it was just across the road. But it did work at times. And so, I mean, we just need to think a little bit more innovatively.
Can some of the market traders come off the market and go in other locations?
They can do.
Something in King Street Square, you know, bring them into the continental market. Because, you know, from, from a trader's point of view, you sell when the customers are there, making money on the continental market. Is that makes up for the days when they're not so good?
Yeah, I mean, we can get traders into that area because they'll only be there for, you know, the day. But similarly, we can take some of the overspill from the continental market onto the market. So that might be a way of trying to bring them in. I'll speak to the league.
I think it would be good.
Yeah.
I think it would be good.
Shouldn't we see the separate events? We do the continent markets to bring people into the town centre. The shop should be benefiting and our market trading should be, is the problem.
Yeah, absolutely. Any more questions for Stacey?
I think it's not in your market, when they had the Dillip Singh Festival, we should be sort of pushing a market there as well, down Riverside Walk and.
Not a bad shout.
Because you get, you know, you get an awful lot of people coming into the town. You know, they've looked around what's sort of in the main bit and then there's that go.
Are you talking about the button island there?
Well, yeah, Riverside Walk really, we'll pass the old Argus buildings. And you have some market stalls up there where, you know, food traders would be.
Because it's, it's right opposite where the Bay Event is. Because you, you know.
We have big queues on the food offer.
That's right, from previous feedback, there's not enough food offerings there.
Are we able to, are we able to pitch there though?
We, we, we would have, I mean, you know, we're trying, we were trying to talk to the continental market organisers to take it down into Riverside. There's a lot of street furniture in there and, and the canopies sort of, you know, are a bit difficult to then pitch. But, you know, it's an ongoing conversation we can have with them, so we'll, we'll, we'll continue to do that.
Cool.
Quick points, just to reiterate that I, I agree with the blended approach to the markets, to the stall holder, especially with the continental market. Yes, continental market does bring a lot of footfall, but people come after the food. And so I was having this, always trying to secure somebody that provides food in the market and that's a difficulty of bringing somebody in. But on those specific days that are there, people come just for the food. I think alternating to regular traders with the food stalls will, will make it so that people have to walk through several of them to reach the food. So it doesn't focus the footfall only on the food stalls we're going King Street, rather than just the market where our regular traders are. But it kind of makes people circulate. People circulate, they come for, for a burger, but they come for a bouquet of flowers or something else. And then that allows everybody to benefit, you know, to, 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 economically it's beneficial to the regular traders. That will make them awesome, very happy and more likely to stay with us longer and bring new ones in through, whether it's the flyer or refer or water of the mouth or whatever.
And the mixture of the only.
I think the blended approach is much better, even if we have to, even if we have stretched it past marketing, going to King Street. And if we have enough of that go a bit further down, they'll, they're not specific occasions like Stuart mentioned, go down to the Riverside. And that something can be looked at. But definitely blending the regular traders with ones that can come from the, the food stalls from the continental markets where they are in. Because when you attract people for the food, automatically they get to know, perhaps they don't know theirs or their floor, but perhaps they don't know what other products are being offered there. But if they're mixed, they're along the way, they will get to know them. Maybe they can come back for another market day where they come for those particular items. The other thing is I've seen your posts. I think your smile does help. I think, I think, I think, I think it's a brilliant job in that respect because clearly your posts have become very visible and they are picking up a lot of interest, so I commend you on that.
Thank you. I'm very passionate to listen.
Yes, it, it comes across and there is always some very attractive.
Okay.
Can we also look at possibly expanding markets, so maybe on a Sunday occasion, once a month, do we have like craft?
Or. So there, you know, so when, when we get into the summer, so that then goes into the Alona remit. So she does the marketplace event. So she will be doing a number of themed type events. Some of them are markets, some of them are like classic car, things like that. So, but yeah, there'll be more of those on a Sunday. So, yeah, we can do that. The other thing that we were thinking of is we, engagement with the, with the traders, you know. you know, just like shops, we, we, we almost need, and when we have the tea room going, you know, it was the old buy six coffee to get one free. If they get some stamps by regular trading, maybe they can come together and create some kind of hamper thing that once you've done your six, you go into a draw to get a hamper or something like that. It just drives, it's just ways of trying to, to get them to think more commercially. Uh, we have some really, really good traders who are very businesslike, we just need it to be rubbed off on some of the others and, yeah. So we'll be, we'll be exploring all that.
There's a question or remark. I'm just assuming that you will be working closely with, with the other lady alone that deals with those markets. Because obviously you have to sort of balance it out, which type of markets on which occasions I think is best. I think that collaboration needs to be really close by to make sure things work on a, you know, both on calendar and, and on types of markets. So.
Any further questions for Stacey? I have one, if not else, that's all. Um, Twitter, X.
Yeah.
I don't see a presence on there yet. Is that something that's coming?
Uh-huh. Is it? Oh, okay. It's a bit fair. I didn't think that that was a great platform, to be honest.
I will tell you, I know, I was about to suggest this, um, Swaffham Markets, there's a, there's an account called Swaffham Market Superintendent, it's brilliant. It's brilliant.
Is it just Swaffham though, Terry? Is it, when you say, is it, is it just Swaffham that you've looked at or is it, is there other, other markets that are on that platform?
I'm looking at Swaffham Market Superintendent, which is an account on Twitter. It's brilliant. And I would encourage you to set up her Twitter account, have a look at that, look at what they do. And, um, and, and, um, try to move forward in, in that area as well. I don't think we can just rely, well, it's simple, I'll say to you, I don't, I don't think we can just rely on one platform.
No, I agree. I agree with them.
So with comms, hit him with everything you've got. So, um, yes, please, Twitter account. Yeah, just sorry, but I've just picked on what Vic said about on a Sunday. Um, just an idea that about a junk, a junkyard food market, like they do in Norwich, you know, open the marketplace, get street traders or street food traders in there.
Yeah, I mean, food. So when we did Foodie Fridays, one of the, one of the negatives that came out of that, uh, from one particular person, actually, um, they were saying they didn't think the food offer was great. The problem that you've got is if you overdo it and they don't make money, they won't come back again. We've had some really good street food vendors at some of our events and if they don't make money, they won't come back. We had a, a, a great one from Norwich who said, I'm never going to come back to Thetford, they don't spend money. So you can overdo it. So again, it's something that if you're going to do that, you've got to do it with a bigger event. So you've got street traders all the way through the town, so it stretches from the river and there's different zones. And maybe even to get at certain times, some of the retailers, like the tall orders of the world and all that, to, to actually promote what they do. So have a bigger presence and, you know, spread out a little bit and things like that.
So I think you also got to look at the, obviously the demographic of Thetford, where we're not, it's not a affluent town anyway. I think Vic was probably saying, like the cricket club when they have their music festival, they, I think one year they had all these food vendors and they was pitching like eight and a half quid for some dirty chips.
Yeah.
And that guy was from Norwich, strange enough, and he said the same, I'm not coming back. Full of the year, they had a local vendor who had chips for three pound, sold out.
Yeah.
And then obviously you've got a family of four people, you know, two adults, two kids, they're not going to pay eight and a half quid for some dirty chips. But I think it's just, you know, you've got to also understand the fact, Thetford isn't the most popular place.
It's not.
That's right. It's not Norwich, it's not Cambridge, it's not Bury.
So what, what we, what we, what we did with the Foodie Friday type thing, we're going to change it slightly because we don't want to call it Foodie Friday because it makes it too focused on food, so it's going to be something different, but it's going to have food as a component of it. We will still have the sort of two mains, if you like, and a dessert-y type end on, and I think that's enough. And then we'll try and expand other stores, yeah.
Sure. Um, I, I completely get the difficulty of getting the vendors to come, because they will go where they can make the most money, that's the nature of the beast. I just wonder, I'm not proposing you do this straight away. We have the facilities, you know, we have kitchens, we have all the rest of it. If we struggle to continue with food, do it ourselves, you know, bring a proposal to spend a bit of council money to employ some people to do it ourselves.
We've had this conversation, Terry and I.
Yeah.
And actually.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't WhatsApp you.
And, and actually, um, that is something that we're going to look at if we can't fulfil, well, I don't, I, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise, because you're sick and tired of me overpromising scaffolding, coming out and things like that. But we, as soon as that comes out, as soon as that comes out, you know, that tea room will open again and we've got a plan to, you know, get that up. So, so part, but that's not, that's one element of food. We want something that's a little bit more substantial. But I think we've got some big gazebo's, we've got warming ovens, I was talking to Stacey, we've got the equipment. We just need to engage someone who can do it for us. We've got commercial kitchens that are just there. It's something that we've discussed, it just needs to be done. So I think we will have a bigger presence to do that and we will do it because I know how hard she's worked to try and, so if they don't come.
Trust me, I'll be out there myself, Terry.
Well.
Okay.
Um, yeah, any further stuff? Otherwise I'll come back to you, David. I'll cut you off rather rimply when you were embarking on gazebo. So I'd like you to expand on that if it's possible.
So the only thing is, um, so when I, when I wrote this report, um, Stacey had said, let's, she'd done her audit, she'd done her repairs and things like that. To take our stock up an additional five gazebo's, we just need new canopies because they're ripped to shreds, as you would expect after all those years. Uh, and to buy five canopies is going to cost five hundred and fifty pounds. Today, we've had a conversation, so I think, you know, that would be good to do that. And then she's got a bigger stock from, you know, as soon as we take delivery. But today, we've, we've got potentially some more money that might be able to bring our stock of gazebo's back up to that twenty. Um, which means, you know, we've got to find an investment of about two and a half thousand pounds. We think we might have found some, someone that might fund that. Um, so that will be good. And what we might do is to have some more, you know, red and white candy stripe ones that make it more sort of, you know, summery markety style that we can have, that we can do, you know, foodie type things and things like that. But what I would ask is for us to look at, um, replacing at least five of them. They're a hundred and six pounds for each canopy, so it's five of them. I'll put down an approximate number of five and fifty quid. But we need, you know, we need that to take the stock up.
Yeah, I will just say that we, I have got gazebo's there and I have fixed them, but for me, I'm trying to get people in and, and, and offering them this rate, this is what it is, this is the special rates that we've got for gazebo's. There's no good me offering that and I've, I've got no, I've got frames sitting in there. I've got no gazebo's. So there's no, there's no point, do you know what I mean? It's like a tax twenty-two, isn't it? I'm trying to get them in. I'm trying to get them in, but there ain't no point and then I go, oh, I mean, I can offer you, but I haven't actually got, so I do need, that's the lack of need.
Is that something we can do?
Terry, do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's charity do that. Um, a hundred and six pounds sounds quite cheap, but they reasonable quality.
No, they are, they are from the company. It, it's just a like-for-like replacement.
Okay.
So I speak to the frames.
To be honest, which is where we bought.
Okay. So we're not talking about replacing the ones that are branded, moving Thetford forward?
No, we're going to go with the generic blank, which, no, we could, uh, uh, honestly, we don't want to move it forward.
That's my point.
But they are that quality.
You're asking for five hundred quid for, um, plain ones.
Yeah, they are.
Rather send a bit more and have the town council logo.
No, I need to, I mean, that might, well, that won't up there a tremendous amount, but.
Chucking this out here, rather than black, wouldn't it be nice if we sort of went Norwich style and had a bit of colour on the market?
We can do.
No, we're talking about music, let's have a bit of colour.
We used to have, we used to have red and green as a variation when we used to alternate and it looked quite colourful.
Could I suggest claret and blue, please?
That's the town's colour. That's the town's logo.
Hmm.
Any old iron? Um, no, you got a proposal there or, or to be?
We haven't got a, a price, but, um, yeah, I think we should go, I don't know how people think. You know, we need to use it for fence and stuff, but I, I think we're inspired.
We're offering it.
I think, I think we'll say that's general setting. I think a hundred and six pounds sounds really.
It's only for the canopy loads, yeah.
I've fixed the gazebo's physically myself.
A brand new frame and canopy is five hundred quid, but we've got the frame.
Yes.
Yeah, we've used the old ones to repair. Stacey's got lots of shrinks to her boat, she's like, you know, Andy, Andy as well. So she's related these more sturdy frames. We just need a canopy above it.
Yeah, definitely need the tools to trade literally, can't actually make combos without eggs.
Can we move on then, please, to six one nine, applications hire the venue free of charge?
So, um, as in the report, this is a strange one because we meet by monthly, we had, um, a group that came in last night. So this is a retrospective application. They actually paid for the venue last night. You probably know as councillors, because it was to deliver some councillor training, uh, for Breckland councillors, I think. Um, originally, the application was to, um, accommodate thirty to forty councillors. I spoke to Sam this morning and about eight turned up, but they paid the thirty pound, which was the higher fee. And they just said, look, as it's councillor training, we're hoping some of your councillors come along, could you do it free of charge? And I said, well, we have a process where we have to go through a committee, so they're paying upfront. I said I'd bring some committee, so if you wanted to give it as free, we would, we would return it. But actually, our councillors didn't benefit because I think it was only outside councillors that went.
It was filigree communications, it was for the local planning for Breckland, you would email about it, but I think it's because it clashed with.
It clashed with finance personnel.
Um, I, I got an email, I understood it to be Breckland planning, not councillor training. And it clashed with.
Financial personnel.
And some personnel.
Yeah.
Um, so I wasn't aware it was training anyway.
Things like workshop and the planning thing.
Uh, uh, anybody else? You, you've got a few on this, do you?
Um, well, I've got Breckland iPad, I've got the same problem as you. You get the old iPad, you get the old.
No, I, I mean about the, um, about the refund.
How much is it? Thirty quid?
They're paid. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a training company. They've got a budget.
What's a training company? Because.
We've dealt with it before.
We incur costs. You mentioned Sam, I was assuming, really.
So, so we had, we had, so we had staff on duty anyway, so, um, so it didn't really, so, yeah. It did incur costs in terms of she, we, she had to open the room, set the room up and things like that. So, yes, it, it did. Um.
It's the other venue, isn't it?
But to be honest, we said, look, you know, if you go, we need to pay upfront because if they don't agree. And they said, look, you know, we'll pay, we'll pay, but we just want to make the application. So I don't think it's one of them ones where they're going to be absolutely desperate for thirty quid back, but, um, but anyway, there is a second one that, that I, that I was approached, um, by the neighbourhood police team. Um, so, uh, Leah spoke to me this morning and said, obviously, um, nationally, there's a state of lots of shoplifting going on at the moment and Thetford unfortunately has not escaped that. So they are resurrecting the shop watch scheme. Uh, and they have engaged with lots of different, um, retailers in the town centre and they've set up this, it's, it's a, it's not WhatsApp, but it's a WhatsApp group in a different format because they can't use WhatsApp, so. Uh, but it, it works on the same principle. Um, but what they want to do is, is launch the idea to further retailers in the town and get everybody to buy into it. And they've asked whether they can come and use the Carnegie for a couple of hours on a Monday morning, ten o'clock till twelve o'clock. Uh, free of charge. Monday is a day which is, is our clean-up day after the weekend, but we can facilitate them. It's up to you whether you think that's a cause that we should.
Would it be? It must be.
So if we, if we were to hire it to them, it would be fifty pound because it's two hours at twenty-five pound an hour. But they have got forty shops, thirty or forty shops signed up already. Um, and it's just, it's just them promoting the shop watch, um, group scheme.
True. Thank you, Carla. Um, on the, uh, for everyone, I'm going to propose that we don't refund it. Uh, I think a training provider and Breckland council should anticipate venue hire costs. Um, uh, if it was a training course that we asked for and Thetford councillors benefited for, then I'd be more generous. But, you know, I'm tempted to say for a dead off, but actually I think it sets a danger, dangerous precedent. There's no public benefit as such. It's an internal training course that we're not benefiting from, and so they really should anticipate the cost. For the police one, I think there is a public benefit. Um, and so long as they acknowledge support from Thetford Town Council, um, you know, we, we, we all have a collective responsibility to support reducing crime and all the rest of it. So on that basis, I think, you know.
Yeah, I agree, but.
I think that, that's, you know, it's a good one to know as well, I think.
Yeah.
Um, are you going to, sorry, Carla, yes, apologies.
Still my turn?
I'm sorry.
You see, I was going to say, I still agree, if, unless there are a charity or a community interest organisation to, in, in, in poll of the benefit of Thetis residents and Thetis people, I don't see why we should give them a special rate. If they don't qualify for it, they shouldn't get it. The whole pretext that it is for councillor training and it can include Thetford Town councillors, I didn't receive an invite. And as far as I know, this is an external training, in, institution providing external training, this has nothing to do with us. And we should treat them as any other commercial activity. And yes, the police one is for the safety of Thetis, for the interests of people and the, and the, the welfare of everybody in town. So this is a community interest activity and therefore we should give them the free rate.
You want to vote on this? Yeah, I've got a proposal or a proposal first, I think.
I'm what you said.
So you're going to propose that we.
Don't be saying no to.
No, to, and yes to.
Have to do it.
Yes, to the.
Um, second up, please, Carla. Um, vote on it in favour, against? Go in. Um, six twenty, venues and markets, staff uniforms.
Um, so, um, so I know this was again discussed in one of the other committees, um, and we had some feedback through the SMT meetings. I'm not too sure how far down the line it was, um, it was to be instigated across the whole staff. But it's something that Terry and I have discussed and, and we've discussed it as a event team, as a venues and markets team. So what we're doing is we've already got polo shirts with the Carnegie and Guildhall branding, that when we have our bar events and other events, we wear those. Um, there was some talk within the staff, uh, team that if we do weddings and mayor and civic functions, those people, should they look a little bit smarter with some formal shirts? Um, so there's a minimum cost for a, a little bit more upgraded stuff. Um, again, internally, we have got now our lanyard badges. Now, I know that's a bit of a contradiction to some, to some of the conversation that we've had in a previous agenda item that, you know, we don't want photos on websites, but we're willing to walk around with lanyards that have got David Brooks on it, have on venues and events, marketing manager, blah, blah, blah. Um, but that's specific to an event, but, but anyway, um, so our staff, our staff are doing that. Um, so I don't know any, so not being tied to those previous discussions, what I'm asking from the councillors is, is there any other further, you know, options that we should be entertaining? What were your thoughts in that meeting and, um?
Exactly what type of uniform you're considering and how much has this gone across us?
The uniforms were already purchased. You've seen them, the, the, the black polo shirts with the logos, they're already purchased. If we, if you think that there are certain events and activities such as civic events and things like that, that we should have an upgrade with a formal shirt or a blouse, then they don't come thick and fast, so I'm, I'm talking about each staff member should have at least one. You're probably talking about two hundred and fifty quid for the team to have one. So it's not a great cost to it. Um, Stacey works a lot more outside and all weather, so she has, uh, a more, um, clothing to, uh, that's appropriate to being outside, especially in this weather. So she's got her Belisha beacon style uniform, um, and she's got, uh, steel toe cap boots because she's moving, you know, heavy gazebo's, things like that. We've already got those, Carla, so I'm not asking for any more money. What I'm asking for is when councillors, as, as I understand, have discussed it, was that your thoughts or would you think it's something completely different?
I can understand that and I think there's nothing wrong with, uh, you know, staff looking presentable and according to the occasion. I don't think two hundred and fifty pounds is a massive amount of money to achieve, to achieve that. So I, from my perspective, I'm okay with that, but depends on what colleagues want. So I, from my perspective, I'm okay with that, but depends on what colleagues want.
I can't remember where we're at, at finance and personnel around uniforms and stuff because we did have a conversation, but it was primarily for the town team, noting that the Carnegie obviously already had the uniform. So if the request is to get some smart options to go with the polo, just don't have a problem with that. That makes perfect sense. Slightly nervous about spending money because obviously at some point this year, you know, things will change. The Guildhall Carnegie will be separate to the town council. So that might be a rebrand, I don't know. But it's two hundred and fifty quid, so I'm happy with that.
I could stress that if you are getting like more formal blouses, shirts for the workers for specific occasions, then perhaps just in case that the name or the role or situation needs to change, perhaps we get those shirts and instead of having boiler engraved, actually having a little tag that can always change later, but the person can just switch them.
So we have, we, so we have lanyard ID sort of badges, but with those kind of things, we also have the little magnetic sort of name badges. Maybe we use those for those kind of occasions because they would look a little bit smarter anyway.
They're also less of a, of a safety hazard.
So therefore we don't need to get them embroidered.
It becomes more flexible if the person or the staff, if a member changes or something, can always change the tag.
Sure. I'd like to see, obviously with the uniforms, approach some of these local companies and see if they'd sponsor them. So they'd have their, like made a name on the back of the. You know, I'm not, I think I've become, so you have the town sort of the logo and all that, and then on the back supports sponsored by Warren Services or something like that. Not in great big, you know, just as a, and I'm sure that he could afford two hundred and fifty quid to supply you t-shirts. Sorry? Yes, yes. Any shirts? I'm not sure of that.
No.
Neither am I.
No, no, no.
I think I say.
Agree.
It wouldn't just, it wouldn't be more interesting. No, I know, I know, I know that was.
Yeah, hanging baskets, they can sponsor.
Merely because you are going to be in official events and other situations and it kind of puts them onto a hundred and fifty pounds, which is not a massive amount in a, in a position of advantage that other sponsors are doing other things for town. I think just it's a bit conflicted. I just don't agree with it.
We're like Barcelona football club. We, we don't have sponsors.
I think the workers should have a time council. Where rather than that represents the authority, not the sponsors.
Then we're always sponsored by.
That's just my, my view.
I think there's, there's something about formality here and, and keeping that separation, isn't there?
Professional.
Yeah.
Okay. Is the two fifty in budget, David? I wasn't here. Why, why are you asking us? Surely you've got the budget to be on.
But our budget, so actually we don't have a uniform budget because it's traditionally come out of, yeah, staff uniforms in the past have come out as central budget. I don't think even the work team have ever got them out of amenities budget. I mean, I don't know, again, what's actually been approved going through for next year, but I did put a line in, into the draft budget for next year under staff uniforms. So we need to, but yeah, so.
I mean, it can just include in whatever line covers the other polo shirts that are already currently used because obviously there's already been previous uniform expenses. You just add on to it, they call it inflation. Just add on to their line. I don't think there needs a separate.
The consensus that we, that we do go, I agree. Just a sort of practical thing, Terry. Do we want to go through finance and personnel to do this or amenities? Or do we do just?
We have to separate here, I don't want to over complicate it.
Can we, can we tell you that as right there? Thank you. Onto six two one, health and safety matters, David.
So there's a couple of issues that are in the, in the ongoing stage at the moment. One of them, I think Vic mentioned earlier, the rear steps of the Carnegie. So yes, it was, if you remember when I reported back at a previous meeting, we got to a point where we got the railings in, all the groundwork had been done. And then the contractor went off to Italy in France and all the rest of it, as he does from time to time. But when he came back, he was then going to do the brickwork, which was around the basement part of it. The bricks were ordered and most of them came in with a place of damage. So we've had to go through the replacement. So they were scheduled to do the work. So rather than having, doing nothing when, as a, as a councillor, we've got a long list of things to do. Nick in the town team moved him on to the next one on the list. So then we've had a really, really cold spell. And as you know, you can't lay bricks in certain temperatures because, you know, it won't go off and stuff. So we're, we're, we're in a position where he's just finishing off this other job. We've got the bricks sorted, they've replaced all the damaged ones. It was their fault and it's ready to go. The railings are all secure and fixed. It's just that face your brick around the bottom part that's got to be done. And then we're ready to open up again. So it's nearest damage, but it was just unfortunate that the delivery was damaged.
Questions?
Well, the area is sinking at the rear Carnegie.
So I took Nick to the back of it and yeah, we've got to investigate those because I don't know whether it's sinking or it's by the big tree. So whether it's root damage and it's been, you know, but that some of the others are, are uprooted. So it is a bit of a hazard at the moment. So yeah, I've got Nick looking at that, so.
Again, I'd like to pass my credit through here as well. I got in touch with Nick regarding one of the missing slabs on the marketplace. We placed in the same day.
Any questions regarding the stats? That was fine. I, I, I sort of have one if nobody else does. We've got this bill and I'll take your point about the bricks and the facings and all the rest of it and that, you know, there's nothing much you can do about that. But I'm not sure it's acceptable for a guy to come in, get a, get a job given to him and then scuttle off to France with the job not complete.
The job has been, there's been issues around whether we needed planning and then we didn't. The guy had had that on hold for nine months.
Okay.
So he could have argued the fact that, to be fair, we've messed him about because of misinformation. And then when we got the go ahead from another person in Breckland planning, that we didn't need planning because it was permitted development within the boundaries of our grounds. He then gone on with the work, but clearly, you know, that was scheduled in.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
We should get to.
And the, and the other one, I think I might be preempting something that's going to come to full council next week. But we've had the issue with the heating in the Guildhall. So the boiler is shot. We can't keep sealing the extraction thing. So that's gone kaput. We've come up or Nick actually came up with a better idea and a cheaper option to utilise the current radiators, which would actually fit in with English Heritage, a grade two listed building rather than a brand new system that would need to have planning permission, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got three quotes. I think it's coming to full council next week. It's by far a cheaper option and a more appropriate option for us because it means that it will utilise the radiators that were in there anyway. So, so that's, that's a good thing. But again, that's in the process of being resolved.
The, the savings on capital investment of reach lines and those radiators compensates on the long term when it comes to the cost of energy. I mean, how energy efficient is that option?
So there were, I mean, to be honest, the cost of, the cost of thermal oil or red diesel or whatever it is, that, that, I mean, that's its daughter. So, you know, a gas, it's going to be gas out, that's going to be cheaper to do that. So in relation to costs, I think it's going to be cheaper and we're going to, we're going to save money in the installation because we're utilising something that we know will work and all the infrastructures there, it's literally just putting a boiler in and connecting it up. It's simplistic for that and that's what it is.
Health and safety, I'm with somebody other committees, obviously. The scaffolding seems to be.
So I, I.
I, you know, what's happening?
Well, the, I mean, for me, I mean, they scuttle in the building every time they arrive. These, these guys will tell you because they look through the window and see me and they know I'm up. And the instruction engineer barely got through the inner doors. And I'm saying that before I go and take you to Nick to go off and do your assessments and all the rest of it, when the hell are you going to get the internals out? I mean, I know there's an overall cost to all of it, but they're doing some additional assessments. Can I just say the assessment on the second tower has been really positive. They've got up there, they've looked at it. They said that's going to last another fifteen years. There's a little bit of damage to one of the plinths, but it's not going to come down. Good, we don't have to worry about that. The new structural engineer has gone up and looked at the current clock tower and he said that even though there is damage, it's not as bad as what you think. It's something that, so basically the next stage is they're going to put together the costings that will repair it. But if the costings are too great and we say, right, we haven't got the money to do it at the moment, we've got to seek funding, we'll take the scaffolding down. And what he's saying is, in his opinion, and it's all about the structural engineer's opinion as a professional, it's not going to fall down. But clearly that needs repair at some point because unlike the second tower, it's not going to last fifteen years. It's in a, it's in disrepair, but it's not. So we've finally got someone who's willing to give us a fair assessment and a more simple assessment. What I've said is, yeah, okay, that's fine. That's all the outs of scaffolding. Get the internals out. Because as soon as the internals are operationally for me, I can start doing events and generating income. The next agenda item is our financial report and it's killing me. But if I can get those out and I've spoken to the scaffolding, as soon as that fellow signs the, you can take them out, they will take it out within two weeks. And within a week after that, with a bit of clear up, we're operational again because everything that we, we do can be done. So I think, again, and I've said this in the past, so God knows whether I'm going to jinx it or not, I think the internals will be coming out very, very soon. The externals depend on the costs because it's then your job as councillors to say, we've got sufficient money in reserves to do it, let's do it, get it off the agenda. Or it's just outside our remit at the moment, we need to seek funding, but get the scaffolding down because it's not going to happen for six, nine months, a year, whatever. But I think what Jonathan is saying is it's your choice, but don't worry. I mean, let's face it, I, sorry, I, I just need to say this because this is a bit, it's, it's honestly, I'm as frustrated as you, Vic, I really am. I asked him, if there's strong winds and that tower gives, will that scaffolding hold it in place? And he said, no. Well, do you know what? In the last few weeks, we've had strong, I mean, I've sat in my house and worried my roof's not going to fly off. So if that was going to come down, it would have come down in the last couple of weeks. So it's all about cost now. He's going to do the cost within the next week or two. And then it's down to you to make a decision. But internally, he's promised me that he's having a discussion with the scaffolding tomorrow and hopefully we can get the internals out. And then I'm a happy bunny. Sorry, Terry.
I'm, I'm only cutting it short because it was all discussed last night.
Well, did Catherine say the same as me?
Yeah. I was sat there thinking, I'll see if you say the same thing, that'd be interesting.
I don't know, I think I wasn't there last night.
It was a written report that went to finance. So it's, I think it's sent to everybody since then. Back in one. Could we for a second come back to the previous point, which was regarding the, what did it regard? Eating, eating. Do we, what are you asking us to do?
No, I'm not asking you to do anything. You'll be asked next week at full. So I, I don't want to.
So it's just a note?
It's just a note to say to Vic, that's another health and safety issue that's actually coming to its term, so a decision will be made by you guys next week. And it's actually, Nick has come up with a better solution because actually we know if we can get those radiators hot, English Heritage will tell you it's the best system for the building.
Yeah. Haven't we heard that?
Yeah.
So good, good.
We all think the same.
That's, that's good. If I could bring that one to a close then we'll get on the six two two, the financial report.
So not good reading, I'm afraid. And as I said in the report, the, the impact of the scaffolding has, has sort of, you know, done some damage as you can see. The income stream says Guildhall T Room. It's not technically the whole, that's not T Room, it's the Guildhall. But the T Room was a big component part that was included in the Guildhall. So that's, that's killing us, the internals. But if we can get it out, we've got stuff to go in there straight away. Again, within, within a, a week of, there's going to be some clear up that we need to do, but we can at least get the T Room up and running on market days. And then we can get events that will support what we've said about how we're going to utilise the T Room in a different context as just a traditional T Room on those other days. Because we, evidence was that footfall was attracted through events with the T Room supporting it and it tripled our income when we did that. So outside market days, which generates a footfall, why don't we do that rather than, so, you know, we've got specialist events all keyed up, ready to go. So I think we can get that back i- into, into running. We have, and I'm desperate, we have weddings booked for spring and summer. So we just need the space, you know. So I, I, I think, you know, hopefully, maybe we haven't got enough time in this year budget to save that, but we know that that's a positive thing going forward. In terms of the bar events, it is a, it's a thing at the moment where, as you've said, you know, people come out with something in their mind that that's their spend, you know, there's a cost of living crisis, they're trying to, and our spend per head is not as much as it used to be. We are looking to try and drive more bar events. We have, we have Sam, who's one of our new recruits, that is doing a lot more work in terms of understanding what we've got going forward. And if we see the gaps early enough, we could actually put our own events on. You're talking about doing food offers on the marketplace. It's not, it's not beyond the, the wit of man to, to put our own, you know, discos on and family events. Amber put some family events on at Christmas in the Carnegie. They were really well attended and actually, you know, mum and dad, get your kiddie in there dancing away to whatever disco it is and we'll have a beer and a wine, you know, and we benefited both ways. So there's lots of things that we can do if we can't generate the, the, the outside hires. Or we're also monitoring the tribute acts. We're getting lots of inquiries, but we don't want to become a tribute act venue. So again, we're trying to schedule those throughout the year. And we want, there's people that want to come back to us, but we're saying, look, we don't want you in 2024, but you can come back in 2025. That's great, let's get us in the diary. So again, things are looking better, but clearly we've struggled with mitigating factors such as the, the scaffolding and the cost of living crisis. In terms of the expenditure, there are areas where we've tried to, tried to make sure that that's conducive to, to the shortfall in the income that we haven't over expended on, on, on certain things. And I think we, we have done that. The one that's killing us on the expenditure side is, is the repairs and maintenance. It's been huge and it is what it is with whole buildings, I'm afraid, you know, but it's hit us hard this year. So not good reading, I'm afraid, but, you know, we are trying to, to claw back whatever we can. And if we can get the scaffolding out, I can assure you, we'll be in doing stuff from, you know, week one.
Questions?
David's lucky because we had finance last night. We had a long depressing look at it.
Okay, thank you. Move on then to six two three, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Anybody? Anybody? Okay, six two four, committee officers update. Any update for the committee officer since the agenda for this meeting is issued? Okay, thank you very much. That's us, isn't it? We're done. Thank you all. What do I have to say to close the meeting? Meeting closed?
Drinks are on you, Shelly.
Thank you very much.